Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the August 10th meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered today by Pastor John Rollison of the Journey of Life Lutheran Church located in East Orlando in District One. Commissioner Gray. Pastor Rollison received a Master of Divinity from Concordia Seminary in St. Louis in 1995. Journey of Life identifies itself as "the perfect church for imperfect people, connecting people to abundant life in Christ." You may stand or remain seated during the invocation and it will be followed by the pledge offered today, led today by District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
I always feel a little bit of attention, tension, not, well, attention also, but tension when I'm asked to give invocations at a community setting because I come as a Christian minister, but not everybody here is a Christian. Seems to me there's only two approaches, either get the religion out of these settings or come to honor everybody's search for meaning and truth in their life, and that's what I choose is the second one. And so I'm here to offer a prayer for our leaders, and I'm going to do that in the name of Jesus, but I would offer that in the spirit of community and encourage you to pray in whatever way that you would pray for our leaders this afternoon as we gather to do the city's business. I brought a scripture from the Old Testament. It's Micah 6 verse 8, and it says, "The Lord has shown you what is good. What does the Lord require of you? It's to do justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with him." So I'm going to pray for our leaders to act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly, to honor my faith. I'll end with, "In Jesus' name," and if your faith is different, end with the prayer termination of your faith, and if you're an atheist, just say yep, or me too, or whatever, as we all establish a moment of goodwill for our city here together. So let's enter into this moment of community prayer. Father, we are a community gathered for a city council meeting. These leaders have been elected to guide our community and make decisions that will affect many people for a long time. As this meeting moves into detailed discussions, grant these leaders wisdom and courage that they may act justly, compassionate hearts that they may love mercy, and gentle spirits that they may fulfill their duties of their office with humility, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation of God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, make a termination of the quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the minutes of the budget workshop, budget review, and city council meetings of July 27, 2015. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill. All in favor, or the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. All right, that brings us right to awards, presentations, and recognitions, and I'd like to call on Lisa Early to help us recognize the Braves Rowing Inc. team.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it. Good afternoon. Today, we're here to recognize the outstanding achievements of the Boone High School Scholastic Rowing Program. The Braves Rowing Club, led by head coach Lenny Walters, has been practicing at Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake since 2011, thanks to an agreement made here by city council. Appreciate that, and they've done an amazing job. Today, we have three of the captains, all who are seniors, all members of the team for the past four years, and all of them inducted into the National Honor Society, who are going to come up and thank you themselves personally for giving them this opportunity. So please let me introduce Justin Billingsley, Victoria Camillieri, and Adam Weber, and ask them to come here to the podium, and it looks like they brought some trophies with them. So come on up, guys. Victoria.
We are returning today to start our season by once again thanking the city of Orlando for supporting Boone Crew. This year, we are excited to celebrate the team's 30th anniversary. This year, our team has grown to an average of 40 high school rowers. When we are not rowing at beautiful Turkey Lake or traveling to Regatas, we have volunteered at events like the National Public Lands Day at Turkey Lake, the OUC Half Marathon, Greenup Boone, and the Boone Reservation Run. But of course, since rowing is our mission, we brought two scholastic trophies that our team earned this past spring. One is for first and state scholastically, third overall for our men's Sweet Four, and the other is for first state scholastically, third overall for our women's lightweight double, which also placed second overall, our regional championships, and come seen the entire southeast region.
For those of you that may not be familiar with scholastic rankings in the, in our state rowing system, the club teams, which are, include rowers from many schools, and scholastic teams, which are rowers from only one school, they all compete in the same races. And though both team types may compete for the same medals, only the scholastic teams are eligible to compete for the scholastic trophies. Scholastic trophies recognize it is more difficult to man a team when recruiting from one school versus a club that may recruit from many schools. And the distinction and privilege of representing William R. Boone High School set our team apart at state and national levels. We're very proud to share these trophies with you today. Throughout the year, we make every effort to reflect your support through our team's success on the water and in the community. Thank you so much from all the rowers and the families of Boone Crew. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, what are those trophies? Tell us what they say. Mr. Weber.
Florida Scholastic State Champion Boys Varsity Four.
The Florida Scholastic Rowing Association Skulling State Championship Women Scholastic Lightweight Double.
Right. So if you all would come up, Mayor Dyer, if you can step down, Commissioner Sheehan, in whose district Boone High School is, and Commissioner Ings, in his district, Bill Frederick Park is, please step down for photos. Thank you. I'm going to also ask Quincy Richardson, our new manager for Bill Frederick Park, to come up for the photos. Quincy.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Debbie, our wellness coordinator, is going to give us an outline of Give Life Orlando Day.
Thank you, Mayor. The community has pulled together to draw attention to the need to donate blood. Normally, there's only a two-day supply of blood, and the supply tends to run lower during the summer months. There is no substitute for human blood, and it cannot be manufactured. When you donate, your blood is circulated inside another person, helping them within three days. The city of Orlando and its employees have a long history of hosting and supporting blood drives. The city has partnered with One Blood, WFTV Channel 9, Church Street District, and the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association for Give Life Orlando Day on Tuesday, August 25th. Donors will receive a free Give Life Orlando t-shirt and a wellness checkup. You can donate at WFTV Channel 9, Orlando City Hall and Church Street from 9 to 7:00, or Courtyard by Marriott Orlando Health and Doubletree from 12 to 6:00 p.m. And if you donate, you can help save three lives, so I encourage you all to do that. Mayor, I believe there's a proclamation.
There sure is. Thank you, Celeste, for the loan of ability for me to actually read the proclamation. City of Orlando Proclamation, "Whereas every two seconds, someone in the United States needs blood, and whereas more than 41,000 blood donations are needed every day, and whereas only 38 percent of the U.S. population is eligible to donate blood, and less than 10 percent do annually, and whereas one pint of blood can save up to three lives, and whereas if only 1 more percent of all Americans would give blood, blood shortages would disappear for the foreseeable future, and whereas the city of Orlando, the Church Street District, the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association, WFTV Channel 9, and One Blood, our local blood center, have joined together to create Give Life Orlando, and whereas Give Life Orlando will make it easy for all downtowners to give blood to those in need, and whereas the city of Orlando recognizes the importance of all blood donations and the selfless act of kindness by blood donors, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Tuesday, August 25, 2015, as Give Life Orlando Day in the city of Orlando."
First off, I'd like to say thank you to the city of Orlando and to our mayor. The reason why we do this, we have a good reason here today. I would like to congratulate Carly Leonard, who is here with us. Not only is she going to be a senior in high school this year, but also she just celebrated four years of being cancer-free, and that's the reason why we do what we do.
Carly, I wanted to hear you speak.
I just want to take a moment to thank the mayor and the commissioners for allowing me to be here, first of all, but thank you for your support of the blood drive and on behalf of all the people who will benefit, including young ladies like Carly. It is greatly appreciated, so thank you.
All right, so our final proclamation relates to International Housekeeping Week, and F.J. Flynn, our Deputy Director of Economic Development, will introduce this one. F.J.?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Good afternoon. The hospitality industry has a significant impact on Central Florida's economic prosperity. The hospitality industry supports one in every three jobs in our community, and there is no city that is more well-known for hospitality than Orlando, having welcomed over 62 million visitors last year. And so in advance of the upcoming International Housekeepers Week, we'd like to acknowledge and show gratitude to our frontline staff at theme parks, hotels, restaurants, and other venues, who work every day to ensure Orlando remains a place for its, well-known for its warm hospitality and welcoming spirit. And so after the reading of the proclamation, I'd like to introduce our hospitality professionals to come down and take a photo with the mayor.
So one year for International Housekeeping Week, I did one of my work-alongs with the staff over at the Boheme, and made beds and other things that you do when you clean rooms. Rooms never look better, as it turns out. Whereas the hospitality industry has a significant impact on Central Florida's economic prosperity, and whereas over 62 million visitors traveled to Central Florida in 2014, generating $60 billion in economic impact, and whereas the Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association is the world's largest regional lodging association, and represents approximately 75 percent of all lodging rooms in Orange County, and whereas an important factor in securing return visits to Central Florida is the high quality of customer service and hard work produced by Central Florida's housekeeping and custodial staff, and whereas the mission of the International Executive Housekeepers Association is to provide a professional organization for executive housekeepers, directors of environmental services, managers engaged in housekeeping or custodial activities, and suppliers of custodial goods and services, and whereas be a good time or a good opportunity for you to take your leave. the IEHA has designated September 13 through the 19, 2015, to honor and celebrate the It's like most people have. excellent work performed by its members. All right, in deference to Commissioner Ings, I'm going to apologize for the length of Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim September 13 through the 19, 2015, as International Housekeeping Week in the city of Orlando. this mayor's update. It may be one of the lengthier ones that I have done, but we only have one meeting Man, good group. in August, so I've got to talk about a number of things that are occurring throughout the Good group. month. Number one, this is the only meeting in August, and it turns out we have a couple of Commissioner birthdays before we convene again. So on August the 15th, District Five Commissioner Regina Hill will celebrate her birthday, and that'll be followed by District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz, I'd like to, on August the 18th, so I would like to wish each of you a happy birthday.
And Mayor, you just had one of them.
And I just celebrated mine last Friday, so why don't we sing "Happy Birthday" to Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Ortiz, and to me? All right. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Tony and Regina and Buddy Dyer. Happy birthday to you. All right. Well, you can go ahead. Would you guys like to hear a repeat and have Commissioner?
No, 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 no.
At least Complianos who want to hear, sir.
Okay, today was a pretty exciting day already. Soccer fever remains very high here in Orlando, and this morning, we joined with the Orlando City Soccer Club, Orange County, in our venues group to announce that the U.S. Women's National Team will return to the Orlando Citrus Bowl for the first time since 2013 as part of a 10-match victory tour to celebrate the 2015 FIFA World, Women's World Cup Championship. And they will play Brazil on October 25th, kickoff is 3:00 p.m. Tickets will go on sale Friday, August 21st, 10:00 a.m. And truly, we are becoming, if we haven't already become, the capital of soccer, soccer capital of the South. And just last week, we joined with Florida Hospital to announce that two Mexican Premier League clubs, Cruz Azul FC and Pueblo FC, did I say that right, Commissioner Ortiz? I thought I did. Will play in the Shares Cup International on September 3rd at 7:30, and it is an inaugural game that will benefit Florida Hospital's Sharing Smiles Program and will be an annual event. So normally, when we get to Labor Day, everybody is thinking the kickoff of college football, but this year, we're going to be pre-seeded with a kickoff of a Mexican Premier League game, and the game between Mexico and Costa Rica drew 53,000 fans, and we anticipate that we will have a crowd of similar nature for this game. Cruz Azul is basically the New York Yankees of that league, so they'll have a tremendous following. City of Orlando Chapter 57 Review Board, in partnership with the Center for Peace, is hosting a 2015 Back to School Summit on Saturday, August 15th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall. To register for that, you can call our Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations, 246-2500, or you can check on the website. I'd also like to invite our residents, businesses to join me and our city commissioners and Chief Mina on Tuesday, August 25th at 6:30 for Orlando Speaks, which is an interactive workshop designed to strengthen the relationships between our police officers and our residents. Building on the national dialogue, Valencia and the Justice Institute, in partnership with the city, will conduct this workshop to enhance our city's community policing initiative. Our community, I always say our greatest strength is our diversity, and we are committed to ensuring that we remain safe, inclusive, and accepting of all. You have to register for this, so go to cityoforlando.net. The OFD Station 2, the Pride of Paramore, is getting a new house, and I'd like to invite everybody to join Commissioner Hill, Chief Williams, and I on September the 8th at 11:30 as we break ground on the new station, and again, it will be, I think, our eighth lead certified fire station, and will provide services to the residents and businesses of Paramore. I'd like to invite everyone to the Downtown Arts District's first Art-Nod Places Event, September the 17th through the 20th. Art-Nod Places is an annual festival that also occurs in other nationally recognized cities of culture like Austin and New York, featuring performances, visual installations, video, sound, and more public spaces. Today, we are voting on a new 50-year agreement with GOA for the operation of Orlando International and Orlando Executive, and I believe that our airport organization is one of the best at long-range planning and visioning to ensure that we anticipate growth, that we are ready for growth, that we can accommodate the growth in passengers, and this is another example of that. We've been working on this agreement for, I don't know, 12 months or 18 months, something like that, but it was, is the culmination of the original 50-year agreement, and it was somewhat complicated, but it took great communication and cooperation between GOA and city staff, everything from planning to police practices, and I want to recognize and thank all of our staff and all of the GOA's staff for the extraordinary time and energy it took to develop this agreement. And we operate one of the best, safest, and most aesthetically pleasing airports in the entire world, and our executive director, Phil Brown, and general counsel, Marcos Marchena, are here with us today. Stand up, guys. Okay, we are making it easier for drivers of ride-sharing companies like Uber and Lyft to comply with our updated ordinances here in the city. We want to make sure that we have background checks, insurance, and vehicle inspections. That's the three things we want for public safety. They have complained that they can't apply online, so we're going to knock down that last barrier. So on today's agenda, there's a contract with Coney Services, which is a local but nationally known app development company to build and deploy the first-of-its-kind vehicle for hire application that will allow for online digital permitting, and we want to get to the point where you can do virtually everything with the city of Orlando online, and we are working toward that in our permitting department as well. Also on today's agenda is an item that will further our efforts to transform our urban environment and make our city more livable and sustainable, and today, we will vote to approve a grant that will allow us to expand and establish new community gardens in the city at many of our parks. The city has a total of eight community gardens, and we want to grow that. Let's see, a couple other items. Outreach to youth, we are voting on eight new employment contracts for After School All-Stars and PKZ, and they are fully funded through an $8 million grant that we received from a number of organizations. State of Florida DOE, Corporation for National Community Service, Volunteer Florida, and Heart of Florida United Way, and we serve over 11,000 children and students every day. There's also a $124,000 grant that will further the city's improvements to Lock Haven Cultural Park, which is Central Florida's premier cultural destination. If you've been by there, you've seen some of that work already ongoing, and Commissioner Stewart and I were out there doing work, they were working on the sidewalks not too long ago. Last thing I would like to mention is we are going to approve, I assume we are going to approve, a new monument at our Blue Jacket Park, the Lone Sailor Navy Memorial, which will commemorate the Orlando site where many of our local heroes began their service in the U.S. Navy as at the former Recruit Training Center. Commissioner Stewart has been working with the Central Florida Navy League for about five years to help the Lone Sailor Navy Memorial become a reality. I'd like to thank all of the Navy League members, but especially those that are here today for their efforts, as well as my mayor's Veterans Advisory Council, who work all year-round to support veteran outreach efforts in Central Florida. Commissioner Stewart, maybe you can invite the veterans to stand, and you can give us a little bit of an update on that.
Let me just share a couple of quick things before we do that, and Ed, if you will, I'd like to just take two minutes and share a little bit about this project, and then introduce a couple of people. Ed? One, two, three.
Thirty years that the Naval Training Center was based in Orlando, more than 2 million sailors passed through their gates and into naval careers. These brave men and women fought and died for our country, and now it's time to give something back. The Orlando Navy League is asking for your help. The goal is to erect a Navy Memorial Lone Sailor statue at the former NTC to honor these past, present, and future brave Americans.
Thank you, Ed. Let me go. Let me cover just a couple of quick things. This video is on YouTube, and Mayor, thank you for letting me take a little bit of your time to share this. The goal of Lone Sailor Navy Memorial is to celebrate the 200, to open it up on the celebration of the Navy's 240th birthday on October 13th. I think is that correct? Bill? Couple of quick comments I'd like to make on behalf of the mayor and the council. One is a special thank you to the city staff that were involved, Denise Ricchio and John Perone, our entire staff, thank you for your work, your yeoman's work, and working and coordinating this. The history wall storyboard was developed as the volunteer aid of UCF's Department of History, including students seeking masters or PhDs.
nationally-known app-development company to build and deploy the first-of-its-kind vehicle for hire application that will allow for online digital permitting, and we want to get to the point where you can do virtually everything with the City of Orlando online, and we are working toward that in our permitting department as well. Also on today's agenda is an item that will further our efforts to transform our urban environment and make our city more livable and sustainable, and today we will vote to approve a grant that will allow us to expand and establish new community gardens in the city at many of our parks. The city has a total of eight community gardens, and we want to grow that. Let's see, a couple other items. Outreach to youth, we are voting on eight new employment contracts for After School All-Stars and PKZ, and they are fully funded through an $8 million grant that we received from a number of organizations. State of Florida DOE, Corporation for National Community Service, Volunteer Florida, and Heart of Florida United Way, and we serve over 11,000 children and students every day. There's also a $124,000 grant that will further the city's improvements to Lock Haven Cultural Park, which is Central Florida's premier cultural destination. If you've been by there, you've seen some of that work already ongoing, and Commissioner Stewart and I were out there doing a workday, working on the sidewalks not too long ago. Last thing I would like to mention is we are going to approve, I assume we are going to approve, a new monument at our Blue Jacket Park, the Lone Sailor Navy Memorial, which will commemorate the Orlando site, where many of our local heroes began their service in the U.S. Navy as at the former recruit training center. Commissioner Stewart has been working with the Central Florida Navy League for about five years to help the Lone Sailor Navy Memorial become a reality. I'd like to thank all of the Navy League members, but especially those that are here today for their efforts, as well as my mayor's Veterans Advisory Council, who work all year-round to support veteran outreach efforts in Central Florida. Commissioner Stewart, maybe you can invite the veterans to stand, and you can give us a little bit of an update on that.
Yeah. Let me just share a couple of quick things before we do that, and Ed, if you will, I'd like to just take two minutes and share a little bit about this project and introduce a couple of people. Ed? One, two, three.
Thirty years that the Naval Training Center was based in Orlando, more than 2 million sailors passed through their gates and into naval careers. These brave men and women fought and died for our country, and now it's time to give something back. The Orlando Navy League is asking for your help. The goal is to erect a Navy Memorial Lone Sailor statue at the former NTC to honor these
Thank you, Ed. Let me go. Let me cover just a couple of quick things. This video is on YouTube, and Mayor, thank you for letting me take a little bit of your time to share this. The goal of Lone Sailor Navy Memorial is to celebrate the 200, to open it up on the celebration of the Navy's 240th birthday on October 13th. I think is that correct, Bill? Couple of quick comments I'd like to make on behalf of the mayor and the council. One is a special thank you to the city staff that were involved, Denise Riquelme and John Peron, our entire staff, thank you for your work, your yeoman's work, and working and coordinating this. The history wall storyboard was developed as the volunteer aid of UCF's Department of History, including students seeking masters or PhDs. It'll show the impact this site has had to our national defense and training of 600,000 men and women in our naval forces. I believe, Commissioners, this is an integral part to help memorialize not only our veterans, but a part of our history that needs to be cherished and remembered. Thank you for your, for our staff, and Mayor Dyer, and our city's commitment to donate the land in perpetuity, bringing the monument into the art inventory, and for paying for more than $100,000, or $10,000 a year of maintenance for the site. After reviewing the proposal contract with the city, I'm excited to give further project, a further boost by utilizing some money from my District 3 account to cover the League's portion of their maintenance costs for the first two years, in order to help keep them free, or help free them up to raise more money towards their fundraising efforts. I'm proud that the League can move forward with the assurance the City of Orlando has made, to the minimal in-kind investment, so far significant investment, as you can imagine. It's a great story to tell, and one that I believe will motivate the last round of donors to help make their goal for October. Mayors and Commissioner, I will be contacting you individually to ask you to help support this effort along the same lines, but as we close today, let me also recognize three of the, part of that Central Florida Navy League. So first is President of the Central Florida Navy League, Mike Motco. Vice President, Bill Roto-Ruder. I won't share all the stories I know about Bill, but he is an American hero in his own right. And Mike Phillips, the chairman. Let's give them a round of applause and thank them for... Thank you for your commitment, your support of the city, thank you for your service to our country, and look forward to opening this up and having the groundbreaking and having the formal opening of this in Blue Jacket Park. And by the way, as a reminder for some of you, it gets its name Blue Jacket Park because of the ship that was there, that was called USS Blue Jacket. That was the one they trained on, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. That concludes my remarks, so we're going to move to consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our Commissioners an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda and update you on important items from their district. We rotate the order that we do that today. First up is Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Stewart, let me advance my willingness to cooperate in this particular project, which we all very, we are very proud of. I'm a veteran, I served in what you would call eighty prominent of the Navy, the U.S. Marines, and we're not going to get into all the jokes about that. But that's something to be proud of, not only in your district, but all around the city, and we are, so you have our commitment. We have a lot of veterans in my district, so I meant it publicly. Mayor, I thought I was going to have the chance to go into the jokes about you turning X amount of years, so I know you turned, what, 35?
Fifty-one.
And Commissioner Hill is 25?
Fifty-one.
Okay, 52, okay, all right, so anyhow, congratulations, both of you. Very proud of the contract for Greater Orlando Aviation Association. It's not only congratulations to you guys, but for the whole City of Orlando, because you guys are an excellent venue, and you guys have done such a good work, so Mr. Brown, Mr. Marchena, and Mr. Frank Rubenbacher, who's not here today, thank you so very much. We're very proud of you, very proud of what you're doing over there and your staff. I'd like to congratulate also the neighborhood associations who participated during the National Night Out last week. Very exciting, very successful. We visited many parties in our district, we had a great time, so thank you to all our members in our communities involved, and thank you for having that spirit of community, and continue getting involved in our fight against crime. Last Wednesday, we graduated the 3rd District 2 Government Academy. I'd like to congratulate all of the participating members and congratulate them for wanting to learn more of our government. And last, but not least, we have, we have actors and actresses from the Spanish community doing great things. We had this past week, on the 7th of August, a play called, I'm going to translate, so let's see how this sounds, "Cuke Box Nights." It was a lot of fun, anyhow. It's actually "Noches de Bellonera," for those that understand Spanish. It was at the Windham Hotel in International Drive. It was a great cast, and we had a lot of fun, we had a big laugh. I hope to see those group, Mayor, getting involved at our Dr. Phillips Performing Arts and other venues as we explore other alternative in the City of Orlando. There's many companies out there from the Latin American community that are wanting to express their art and culture in our city, and they're doing a superb job, and I'm looking forward to, Mayor, to invite you and the rest of the Commissioners and other members of our community to see some of this play. I did ask them to translate them, so it's going to be fun. With that being said, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. District 3, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for letting me share a little bit about the Lone Sailor Memorial. It's going to be a great park and a great addition over there. I appreciate y'all's hard work. Let me share a couple of quick things. I was honored to play in the world's largest golf outing at Dubstred this past Monday. It's a brainchild of Billy Casper, who's since now deceased, but his event raises money for the Wounded Warrior Project throughout the country. At Dubstred alone, we raised $20,650 for this great cause, and nationwide, and 175 golf courses throughout the country. They raised more than $850,000. So it's a great opportunity for us to be, we're part of it here because of our relationship with Billy Casper at Dubstred. Couple of quick updates, I can't believe that another school year is about to begin, but that comes in mind, one of the favorite sporting events, and while I'm excited about the women's national soccer coming to Orlando, I'm also very excited about the Battle of College Park that's taking place this year at Bishop Moore. It's going to be Friday, August 28th, the mayor and I'll be there. Last time, Mayor, we won the first half, and they won the second half. Unfortunately, they scored more points than we did the second half, but we're going to get that trophy back and take it back over to Edgewater High School. So it's going to be a great time to come and be part of that. Also, for those interested in our public schools, just want everybody to know that OCPS is hosting a 60% plans for the new upcoming Audubon Park K8 on Wednesday, August 26th at 6:00 PM at the current Audubon Park Elementary Cafeteria in Baldwin Park. So if you get a chance, you want to see the plans, please come over and get a chance to have some input into those plans. On the agenda today, Item C5, we're glad to partner with another small business in our company, Payor Law Group. Chris, will you please take a moment to stand, and let's welcome you, so thank you very much for being here. Chris is the business owner and the recipient today of the Small Business Facade Grant over at 711 West Colonial Drive, near the corner of Colonial Drive in Paramore, in the area that we're really trying to work on, and Chris appreciates what you have done over there, so thank you for your hard work. On Item D9 and G1, we're grateful to the Orange County Division of Cultural Affairs for awarding two facilities grants to the City of Orlando, one in the amount of $124,000 for the Lock Haven Cultural Park, the mayor mentioned that, and one in the amount of $70,000 in 746 for Lou Gardens. I want to thank Commissioner Sheehan. Commissioner, thank you very much for your gift. She and I joined together as part of the matching grant there to be able to get awarded those dollars, and it would not have happened without you, Commissioner, thank you very much. If you haven't had a chance to go over there, you'll get a chance to see some of the work that they're doing. I also want to thank OUC, and thank Orlando Walks Program for the dollars that they've put in outside of the $124,000. I also want to thank our staff, Jason Burton, Pauline Eaton, Beth Gruber, John Peron, and Lisa Early, as well as representatives from all of the cultural park facilities. Thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you. Lisa, please pass that along for me, please. And finally, under 18A permits, Mayor, we had a chance to, last year, go to the First Maker Fair at Lock Haven Park. It's coming back again, September 12th and 13th. If you haven't been to this event, it's a chance for you to go out and really meet some people who are doing incredible and creative things with stuff around our community and around the world, from science to art, robots to rockets, and nothing is off limits. It's a chance to see creativity happen right here. It's makerfairorlando.com at the Orlando Science Center in September, and we're approving that permit today. And that's all that I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. District 4.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to make a brief statement about the Boone Braves Roland kids. I mean, they are just so inspirational, because a lot of people might not know the backstory. They had partnered with a group to help them buy their boats and run their boathouse and everything like that, and that group basically pulled up, and they had no boats, they had nothing to compete with, and they had to start completely from scratch. And Commissioner Ings, thank you so much for helping with the boathouse, and we see how far these kids have come, from having nothing to actually coming back with state championships. This is what happens when you support kids. So Commissioner Ings, again, it's at Turkey Lake Park where they practice, I appreciate you so much, but you know, the Boone Brave kids, they've just done great work to bring back this, and that's just one of those field day moments, you say, you know what? We invested in these kids, and it really paid back. So thanks again, and Mayor, thank you for all your support on that as well. It's great to see these kids thriving after a really bad thing happened, and they really, really, really turned it around. There's been a lot of talk on social media, and I don't know if anybody's here today on Item C6, the Municipal Planning Board Minutes, but a lot of times, I see things out in social media, and we're asked to comment on them. I can't do that as a Commissioner. I can't get out on social media and comment on things that are coming before council. It's actually a violation of public records law. And it's very difficult, though, to counter misinformation that's being put out on social media when I can't comment it because I will be violating a public records law. So even though I'm a very transparent person, try to comment on things when I can, kind of run into a little bit of difficulty, I'm going to read a statement for a reason, because there's legal implications involved. So on today's agenda, I want to clarify something for my constituents relating to a couple of proposed new developments near Lake Yola. Item number C6 on the agenda is accepting the meeting minutes and approving the recommendation recommended actions from the Municipal Planning Board's July 21st meeting, with the exception of the recommendations for the Madera Central Project, that's the proposed residential tower at the current location of the University Club on Central and Roseland, and the City Center Project, Catty Corner across Central and Roseland and adjacent to Lake Yola Park. To be clear, these projects were considered by the MPB on July 21st, but are not being considered by the city council today because both projects have been appealed to a quasi-judicial hearing officer. City council will consider these projects after the hearing officer has heard the cases and sends an additional recommendation to us. This process can take several months. While this process is ongoing, our constituents should feel free to share their opinions with me and with all of us on the city council, but we have a legal obligation to reserve formulating an opinion on the applications until the quasi-judicial process has run its course and the record of decision is submitted to council at a public hearing. Because of that, we can't even respond to any of these, other than to acknowledge that we have received them. This ensures that all parties, both those for and against the proposals, have a fair and open opportunity for a public hearing. So if anybody's here to talk about that today, it's not that we're trying to hide anything. This is the public process, I'm glad that it's been, you know, a very rigorous public process, and people are very excited about it, but again, we're not going to be hearing that item today, and that's why, and that's why I haven't responded on social media, that's why I've said I can't comment on this. And one of them is actually in Commissioner Hill's district, but one of the, one of the appealed processes is in my district, but just want to be completely transparent and clear about the process moving forward, and that's all I had, Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Move to District 5, Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few things, as always, going on in District 5. I'd like to thank, under your leadership, Mayor, and your staff, housing with, finally getting it done, with that $695,000 grant over at the Richard Allen Gardens apartment there in Paramore. I'm really excited about that project, getting ready to get underway, because I do believe that is going to be one of the anchors of what's to come now in that west side of, excuse me, south side of Paramore. So I'm really excited about that. Thank you guys for your sticking in there and getting it done. I know there was a lot of work to put that together. Excited about the MPB recommendations approval and granting, hopefully we'll approve that today over in District 5 at the Guardian Care Nursing Home Facility. It's one of the first and only African-American nursing homes here in the City of Orlando under the leadership of Ms. Eloise Abraham and the board president, Mr. Azol Reddick. I often visit that facility and meet with the residents there, and it's a five-star facility. They really take great care of those residents there, and hopefully that will be also a hub of medical attention that our residents, our senior residents are getting in that area. They've just purchased a medical center across the street that they're rehabbing, and with this, expanding that skilled nursing facility is much needed there in that area. Also, just to speak kudos to the Broken Coldry Brewery, that hopefully is underway with this approval. That is going to be a major economic impact there in the Paramore area, they're on Church Street near the soccer stadium, especially for job creation. And I'm very excited that people are starting to come to Paramore and invest in our area. So hopefully, we can do what we can to assist with economic development. I know me and yourself, Mayor, will be going on Wednesday at 2:30 there in the Paramore area to do a ribbon cutting for other shops that are now opening up there in that Paramore corner, the shops of Paramore. And thank you also, Walter Hawkins, for your leadership, what happened, revitalized that area. On 7/29, I'd like to thank Office Depot, myself and Lisa Early of Park and Recs went over, and Office Depot gave us 500 book bags for needy youth there in our area, and we were able to assist the children in the home apartments there in Ivy Lane Corner, where we have over 600, 700 kids that live there in that home apartment, Ivy Lane community. That day, under the leadership of Sergeant Deborah Thomas and Greg Turner, and thank you, Chief Mina, if you're listening, for your assistance with OPD, we had a Stop the Violence March, and over 600 youth and community leaders and churches came out and marched a quarter of a mile down Ivy Lane in unity. We had mothers that children had just been killed there in the county and city in the last couple of months, well, weeks at that point, and I think it really started a lot of healing in the community, so thank everyone that supported that effort. And you also, Commissioner Ings, you were right there, made a major impact by standing there with the community residents. Thank you, sir, for your participation. Then we had, I think that was there in July 30th, we had Something Beautiful over at the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts. All the Parks and Recs departments were there when Tony Met Oscar, and Avery, and the mayor, and Commissioner Stewart, and Commissioner Gray was there, and I know we all were proud to see our kids there in Park and Recs in their evening attire, and how would you say it, actually becoming little actresses and actors, and the raw talent that's in our Park and Recs department, and just to see, and forgive me for lack of better words, some of our most neediest kids or inner-city kids, they are standing on that performing arts stage, and their parents in the audience, many that might not be able to attend a Broadway show, but to actually see their children perform, it was so stirring. And I know many, because of that stage, they have gotten that bug and possibly will be back 15 years from now as a Broadway singer or actor, so thank you Parks and Recs and staff for your great leadership. They put that together in like six weeks. On August 1st, we had our last lacrosse game there at Emery Hamilton Sports. We do have a girls' lacrosse team now in the Paramore area at Jackson and Callahan Center, and see those little girls out there with their lacrosse sticks and their goggles. It was, you know, I'm looking forward to this year, because all the opportunity that lies... lies ahead for them. Lacrosse is a sport that many minorities don't participate in, but there's a great scholarship, college scholarship opportunities, and to see them start to, and thank you to little Ms. Edmonds for her leadership and volunteerism in the community. On that very same day, we started our first, and I've partnered with a organization here in the Paramore community called Heart to Heart, and we started our first inner-city soccer league. And it was over 100 kids that came out, and Orlando City Soccer is assisting us to where we're now grooming kids there, not just in Paramore, but Pine Hills and throughout the city. And the great part about this, the parents don't have to pay. They don't have to pay for registration, they don't have to pay for uniforms, they don't have to pay for equipment. The only thing they need to do is bring their kids. So I'm really excited about the future with soccer in the inner city, and being exposed to that. We also, on August 7th, had a ribbon cutting at the Salvation Army at William Booth Towers with our seniors resource fair at William Booth Towers, and over 200 seniors participated. They're mostly the overlooked population, we know that, and it was at least 30 vendors that came with resources to assist our seniors there in the District 5 area, to not be vulnerable, but to empower them and also to assist them with their independence. A big thank you and shout out to Orlando City Soccer and Orlando Magic. They came together as one this Saturday and helped me host a back-to-school celebration in HJ High and kicking the streets, who put out over 600, 700 flyers, went door-to-door informing the community. And by those efforts, we were able to give over 1,000 kids there in the Paramore area book packs filled with supplies, and over 1,400 folk showed up, and it was music, entertainment. Publix donated fresh foods and vegetables, and it was a major, major success. And just to see all that participation and the parents coming out and receiving information about health and wellness, about tutoring programs and mental health programs there for their youth that might have some type of behavior issues or just need mentors, and I'd like to thank them. Also, I failed to mention CFO Byron Brooks. Thank you, if you're in here, for his participation. The Omegas, they came out on August 1st with that back-to-school violence awareness walk, and it was about 15 of them, and they really made a difference. They were in the rain carrying foods and different things for the constituents, and thank you for showing up and your fraternity for showing up and helping the community there in the Ivy Lane Corner. On the 15th, I'll be celebrating my 50th birthday, and I'll be passing out book packs. That's what I'm doing for my 50th, with steps in the right direction, centenary praise, and a care for the community. They'll be having at least 1,000 book packs filled with supplies and 500 new Adidas tennis shoes we'll be giving to needy kids there in that District 5 Pine Hills Corner at the Emory Hamilton Field. We're anticipating about 4,000 residents from all around to come, so I'm really excited about that. And the reason it's called for steps in the right direction is because, and I can recall, kids that parents just have barely enough to keep the lights on and food on the table, you know, it's something when a kid go back to school with a new pair of shoes. You know, their self-image and esteem is affected if they don't so. So hopefully, with those pair of shoes will help them, and those book packs will help give them the foundation for a successful year. I would like to also say, Commissioner Stewart, I was one of the women that went to bootcamp at the Naval Center. It was the only facility in the nation that women could go to bootcamp, and I was part of K-018. So that is a great monument, 1986. I'd like to introduce, I do have a new aide, executive aide, that's well-qualified, and I'm happy that he's on board to assist me with District 5 businesses and the residents and the city here of Orlando to continue to build that district. Justin Felton, he is coming from a long-term standpoint, what can you stand? Justin has implemented major programs through his leadership in Pine Hills at the Urban League, where he spearheaded most things, and I'm certain that we will really be proud of the things that he's going to assist me with here in District 5. And that's it. Except for one little thing, Mayor, and if Marcia's here, I do have a little concern when I heard that about the registration for the Orlando Speak Out. Most of my constituents there in that area doesn't, don't have computer access to go online to register. And usually what I do is I have a volunteer canvassing team that go out and put out literature on the doors. If there is a way to amend that so that they can be included in the process there in the community, because I fear that they might not, because they're not going to be able to go on to pre-register. I don't know how that'll work.
Well, so, I don't think you have to register online. You can pre-register in writing, so if you have people canvassing, they can bring registration forms for them to fill out.
Okay, okay. All right, that'd be great. I'll do that.
All right. Commissioner Ings?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say on Item D6, Commissioner Stewart, the Lone Sailor Monument and Memorial, I would definitely be willing to assist in whatever that I can do to help with this particular project, because this is a great project, and I love the rendering. It speaks volumes for the city of Orlando and what you guys have done with that, so you can count me in as well.
Great.
On this past Friday, July, well, on Friday, July 31st, I was out at the Turkey Lake, Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake. The JV's Foundation, which is Jumping in the Victory Foundation, was present with their end-of-the-summer program, and they were actually celebrating the youth that were involved in their program. They had over 25 youth in the program, and this was the fight against human trafficking. And what they do is make sure that our kids are protected. The one thing that I said as I spoke before the group and some of the parents that were there, and there were visiting organizations from outside of Orlando that came to Turkey Lake Park for this event, and I said that, you know, we have to draw a line in the sand to protect our kids, and we do have to do that. And we do have to make a statement, because human trafficking is one of the leading causes of our kids getting on drugs, drinking, killing themselves, committing suicide, and also getting involved in prostitution because they're forced into that. And so Ms. Denise Lewis, who is the founder of this program, is housed currently at the frontline outreach, and so she's been doing a remarkable job, and we want to thank her for her effort. Then also Saturday, August 1st, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, the Smith Center Wildcats and 49ers had their awards banquet, and the young players and the cheerleaders were all given their trophies. The families were there to see them get their rewards. And also, the recent, well, the coach, Luther Blackshear, is a recent recovering stroke victim, and Luther had a stroke probably about a couple of months ago, but he's recovering very well. At one point, he could not speak nor walk, but he was able to walk into the Smith Center. So he was honored and presented with the Commissioner Samuel B. Ings Distinguished Service Award, and that was because of his outstanding contribution, support, and dedication and community leadership to the West Orlando Wildcats Youth Football Program in District Also, former NFL player Keith Council was the guest speaker for the event, and Keith Council is the brother to Kia Council, who used to work here with the City of Orlando Police Department, Chief Pigman. And Keith Council grew up in Orlando and played with the Minnesota Vikings. They looked good last night. I don't know how that's going to work out for the rest of the season, though, against Pittsburgh, but he played with the Minnesota Vikings and also the New York Giants. He currently teaches physical education at Lake Nona, and we also want to thank Coach Vladimir Chafri and Coach Greg Bird and all of the other coaches. And there were two moms that support the youth out there, and the coaches, Ms. Tia and Ms. Andresia. We want to recognize you for your outstanding support as well. Also went to a ribbon cutting with the West Orange Chamber at 2603 South High Wasey Road, and this was for Pinot's Palais, and that's a place for all of us adults that want to go out and do some painting. The place is open, they have wine and everything that you can bring, or you can buy and purchase there at the facility. You can also bring your food with you, and they have instructors that can help you go through and do your painting, so that was a great event. And I did get an opportunity to paint some oranges on the orange tree, you know, just little circles. So Commissioner Gray, you could have done it too, you know what I mean? Also, too, this past Wednesday through Saturday, I attended the NBC Leo Summer Conference, which is the National Black Caucus of Local Electoral Officials Summer Conference at the Western, there in Fort Lauderdale Beach, Florida, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. And Mayor Dyer, I just want you to know that Mayor John Seiler of Fort Lauderdale?
Jack Seiler.
Jack Seiler, John Jack Seiler, like John Buddy Dyer. He was sporting his Orlando tie that you gave him, so he made sure I knew of that, and so, and he was sporting it very proudly, too. And then also, at that particular conference, had an opportunity to meet Harriet Winslet, who played that role on Family Matters along with Carl and Urkel, Ms. Jo Marie Payton, and Ms. Jo Marie Payton has an excellent program that she's working with young people, and I'd like to get her into the Orlando area to talk about doing some things with our young ladies as well. Mayor, I think that International Housekeeping Proclamation was great, and what would be even greater is if that international housekeeping organization had an award that they can give each year to an outstanding housekeeper, because they do play a very important role in making sure that the hospitality is felt and that people feel secure in their rooms and that kind of thing when they come and visit Orlando. And also, while at the NBC Leo Summer Conference on the 7th, which was Friday night, I received the Presidential Service Award for my contributions and dedication in support of the ideals of public community service, and this was presented to me by the NBC Leo National President, Mayor James Walls, out of District Heights, Maryland, and also Mayor Johnny Ford of Tuskegee, Alabama, was there along with his wife, retired U.S. Federal Judge Joyce Ford. Also, on Saturday, the 8th, we had Unity Day here at the Dr. James R. Smith Center with District Field Worker Audrey Wilson of the Firstborn Church of the Living God, and this was the Sanford District, so they brought their whole group of churches together here in District 6. And this is the third year in a row that they've done that, so they feel very comfortable with our facilities at Hankins Park and the Dr. James R. Smith Center. And also on Saturday, the seniors of L. Claudia Allen Center and Commissioner Mabel Butler, they held their annual bid-wist tournament there at the L. Claudia Allen Center, so that was a great event. Then also Saturday night, Bethune-Cookman Booster Club held its annual visionary awards banquet at Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church. So I was able to make that one for sure after we came back from Fort Lauderdale on Saturday. And some of the recipients that received this visionary awards was retired Chief Judge Belvin Perry Jr., former Orlando Police Chief Val Demmons, and Community Resource Official and retired Orange County Health Department Official Larry Williams. And then coming up on Saturday, August 15th, is the District 6 Annual Crime Prevention Walk and Back-to-School Book Bag Giveaway. And the walk is actually, we're going to start staging about 8:00 a.m. at the Washington Shore Shopping Center located at 3599 Columbia Street. The walk will begin promptly at 9:00 a.m., and we will walk from the Washington Shore Shopping Center to the frontline outreach at 3,000 C.R. Smith Street here in Orlando. And of course, commissioners, coming up is the Red Tie Golf Celebrity Extravaganza Event. I want to promote it now at the Rosen Shingle Creek Golf Resort at 9939 Universal Boulevard. So we're looking for everybody to get involved. We need golfers, we need supporters. You too can be a part of this event. With the proceeds from this, we help deal with a lot of our youth and a lot of the programming that we do with them, and so it's a great worthy event, and we look forward to some great things from that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. District 1, Commissioner Gray?
One more, one more to go. Here we go. Commissioner Hill, I wanted to say thank you for bringing up the performance by the kids of the community centers. It really was neat, the opportunity for the kids to perform on a stage in a world-class facility was great, and it was over two hours, and I can say the last group got just as many cheers and applause as the first group, so it was a great event. Thanks for bringing it up. On the agenda, A2, I want to talk about GOA real quick. We all think about GOA from the tourist perspective, getting tourists in and out, and that's very key and very important, but I also want to give our folks credit for the role they play in our business community. It's key, especially in my district with Medical City, that we get people in and out of Medical City. I've got a lot of donors, a lot of philanthropic organizations that need to come and see where their money's going, and it's key to get folks in and out. And also, from a perspective of attracting businesses to central Florida, as we continue to grow the business community, we've got to have an airport that gets people in and out. And so, gentlemen, thanks for your leadership to you and to your teams, because the business perspective is growing and as important as the tourist section, in my view, so thank you for that. On C1, the Tyson's Corner Annunciation, I want to give my support to that. The sponsors of that have been very patient while we've worked on coming up with a joint planning agreement, which leads me to Item C6, which is the Municipal Planning Board. Credit to Michelle Beaman and Elizabeth Deng and Dean Grandin and the crew for taking the time to work with our neighbors in the county to balance the need for growth along Narcusi Road with landowners who have desire to develop their property, but also to do our best to not disrupt the lifestyle that the county residents have. And I think our folks have done a good job of balancing that, and I submit the MPB's recommendation to go to ordinance with that. That was well done. Finally, I'm going to, let's see, confess a conflict on Item Number 17. I mentioned that this morning, and Mayor, I've given the clerk my conflict sheet. I have done some business with the sponsor of that. It's a fine line, but an abundance of caution. I'll just declare a conflict and not vote on Item 17 of the Municipal Planning Board Minutes. So with that, Mayor, I will recommend or make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Acknowledging that we deferred Item B2, that if you have a printed agenda, maybe on there. So... on the floor for this morning at the Agenda Review Meeting. All right, motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So the consent agenda is passed.
Yes, sir.
Just confess. Okay, we have a few more items to go here. The next on the agenda is hearings. And we have one hearing today on the proposed approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Third Amended and Restated Development Order for the Millennium Development of Regional Impact. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. We have a motion to approve in a second. Does anyone from the public want to testify on this matter? Close the public hearing. Is there discussion among commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we have no ordinances on second read, but we do have a couple of ordinances on first read. Number one, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 2015-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located north of Columbia Street, east of South Ivy Lane, and south and west of Elston Lane, and comprised of .84 acres of land, more or less. Amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as mixed-use corridor medium intensity on the city's official future land use maps. And designating the property as the medium-intensity mixed-use corridor district on the city's official zoning maps. Providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps. Providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 2015-41, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning certain land generally located between Millenia Lakes Boulevard and Shingle Creek and south of Millenia Boulevard, addressed as 5403 Millenia Lakes Boulevard, and comprised of approximately 4.04 acres of land from the O2 Medium Intensity Office and Residential District to the AC2 Urban Activity Center District. Providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps. Providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And so the motion carries. And that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today. Thank you for today.